Just have to catch up. And are you guys all comfortable with that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Just, let's just get started and if somebody shows up, then we, they'll just pick up on where we're at.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay, so we're calling this meeting to order and April fifteenth. So I guess from a Thurston County group, we'll need the approval of the agenda. And there's second?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay, so all in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay. So we're going to our public communications segment. So if there's anybody, participants in the audience that would like to speak, please. Put up your hand or signify that you're, you're looking to have a moment. We have three minutes and Polly will put up a timer, I'm guessing. And we'll go from there. I'm not seeing anybody as of yet. Any participants in the audience like to speak? And there's Scott, great. Okay, so I'm not seeing anybody, so we're moving on. So let's, how about we go through our, our guests from Tom Water with introductions? And I'm just gonna go across my screen and then you guys can introduce yourselves. And looks like Terry, you're on the top.
Drucker Patrick, planning commissioner, city of Tom Water, going on twenty years.
Elizabeth?
Hi everyone, good evening. I'm Elizabeth Robbins, planning commissioner and chair for the Tom Water Planning Commission.
Megan?
I'm Megan Sullivan, I use she/her pronouns. I am the vice chair for Tom Water Planning Commission.
And this young gentleman here who has Leah Davis's name?
Yeah, I don't know why. My name, I gotta rename myself. My name is Nam Wen. I'm on the Tom Water Planning Commission of about three years.
There you go. Thank you. And Doty? You're muted, Doty.
Thank you. It helps to be unmuted. Hi, my name's Doty Catlin. I've been on the commission since two thousand and eighteen, I believe.
Great.
Thank you.
And Brad?
And I'm Brad Meddred. I'm the planning manager with the city of Tom Water.
Welcome. I think that's all the Tom Water folks I see. And so let's start. Eric, you're corner left.
Eric Casino, I represent District Two in unincorporated Thurston County and I live in, on Long Lake.
And Ed?
Ed Fleischer, District Two, out by Nusqually.
And Doug?
Dondehan, District One, and I live close to the intersection of Yelm Highway and College.
Doug?
Doug Garmen, District Two, southeastern part of the Lacy Urban Growth Area.
Great. Scott?
Scott Nelson, Scott Lake.
And I'm Jim Simmons, District Three, Alex Niobon. And let's introduce staff also. I think they're an important part of our group. Leah?
Leah Davis, Thurston County Community Planning and Economic Development.
Hi, Polly Stoker, CPED Department.
Thank you. And Maya?
Maya Tople, Senior Planner with Community Planning.
Great. Thank you all for showing up and especially to our visitors from Tom Water. We appreciate you being here. So let's get on with the program and I'll turn it over to Brad and Leah.
Okay, Leah, do you mind if I start?
That would be great, Brad. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for having us back for a work session. As you remember, we had a briefing on this topic at your March thirty-first joint meeting. Since that time, we've, we had a briefing last night with our general government committee with the city council. It went very well. They were very appreciative of all the work that has been done. And also the progress that we've been making, working together to get this through. Before I start going through the presentation that I have prepared, I'd like to sort of read through some comments that I received from Councilmember Dahlhoff. And these are suggested comments regarding perhaps changing the tone of the, the plan a little bit in terms of language. And I just wanted to pass that by the planning commissioners before we took action on that. Her focus is very much on the equity side and also inclusiveness for the community. And as you remember, the plan is from nineteen ninety-five and I attempted to make some changes to bring it more current. But I think there's a, some language that could be updated, but I wanted to pass that by you. Her suggestions were that we change citizens to community members. That we look for general gender neutral language. And that we explicitly define neighborhood character as accessible, sustainable, and inclusive. And remove what references to established or settled, and we can discuss how we can do that. And to look to change single family outside of the zoning district names to low density. If those changes are okay with the planning commission, staff would propose that we make the changes to the document before the next hearing. Or hopefully the, the hearing for next month. And or if there are any other changes that, of that nature that you would like to see or, or not see.
I would, I would, this is Commissioner Robbins' city. And I'm, I'm really in support of Councilmember Dahlhoff's suggestions there. But I have, I have a question about the very last item, about the low density. And I wonder if, does, does that somehow get us contrary with, you know, all the varieties in code for the, the various housing types and densities? I'm just worried that we, we might be setting this up for, you know, confusion or down the line. Other, if, if that doesn't seem like it presents a problem, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, it will be a matter of really going through the, the, the plan for each instance and deciding what would be the most appropriate term. For the most part, I imagine, single family is included as a designation name or as part of a zone name. And I don't think those things would change. I would have to look at the context and all the other cases where that may come up.
Hi Brad, this is Commissioner Catlin. I would agree with Commissioner Robinson. My only concern is that, that verbiage, low density, as opposed to single family housing is a little bit confusing. Especially where, coming from my profession, working with, we actually use that term, single family housing constantly.
Right.
So that's my two cents. Thank you.
So I would be in agreement. This is Scott Nelson. Because we're talking about the county's plan. And I think, single family in the urban growth area is not low density. And I mean, when we're talking four, maybe six houses per acre, that doesn't qualify as low density at all in Thurston County's plan.
Yeah, as a clarification, when we're talking about the UGAs, it would qualify as low density. But you're correct, for the rest of the county outside of those UGAs, when you're talking low density, it's definitely rural density, it's not urban level density.
So Ed Fleischer, I, I'm a little, I'm gonna be, it's hard for me to sort of picture this without actually seeing how these changes would be in writing as we, you know, look at it. But I, I do a question, are those changes, are they consistent with the Tom Water zoning and planning inside the city of Tom Water?
It is, as with all of our documents, we, we've been updating and changing as we update, take on the documents. So I would say, for example, the climate mitigation plan that, that we recently accepted. Our urban forestry plan and our housing action plan all come from that same kind of language. But things like our, our current comprehensive plan, I have not necessarily made those changes yet. Because they're about five years old and we haven't gone through that cycle, if that makes sense.
Yeah, sort of. I, I, I wasn't supposed to talk about that, but using the different term for zoning. We're gonna make, change where to make a change, you know?
I'm fine with not using that if there's confusion. And just judging by the comments received so far, that, that sounds like a term that we don't need to address right now. If that makes sense.
I agree. It, it sounds, it sounds not really confusing, but it sounds contradictory. It's just that they're two actually different definitions.
Brad, Commissioner Kirkpatrick has a question.
I actually think low density sounds better since a family is now defined as six independent people. Such that, single family really has no meaning anymore.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick is referring to some recent discussions we've had with our housing text amendments. Where we made some changes to not only uses and locations for uses, but also family size and definitions for dwellings and so forth.
I wonder, I wondered too also if using the term family anymore kind of runs up against the whole fair housing deal or anything like that? Does that seem to be any kind of an issue?
I don't think so, and I don't think we have that issue with the plan. I could definitely double check when I'm reviewing it again.
Brad, does, does Tom Water make a differentiation between a community member and a resident?
No, actually, I think you're, you're on the right track. We've been shifting from citizen to resident or community member. So I, I think if we use either community member or resident, I think that would be appropriate.
And Brad, how does that differ from citizen?
I think the, it's a recognition that our community is made up of a lot of people that may or may not have American citizenship. And that has been a very important part of the discussions that we've been having in the city council. So that's the reason we've been moving away from that term.
Yeah, my comment on that, I, I would, I don't have any objection to that, I, I guess. Because I could see how citizen would, could be said to be narrow a term, I, but I, I sort of question the forum here though. I mean, that's the kind of change that a county commission or a, or a city council goes through and makes throughout their code. And I'm a little uncomfortable with doing it. We, we have four different UGAs we regulate, plus the unincorporated county. It's, I, well, I don't, I haven't seen the document, but, but it, it seems to me that, that, I'm surprised to hear it coming up in this forum.
I'm uncomfortable with it also because a community member could be defined as a business owner who is not a citizen of the city and doesn't get to vote or have any other, you know, has no position in, in the structure. So it's, it's, the community member is too broad, I think.
And I would go ahead and second that, Doug. I think that citizen is more appropriate.
I, I personally don't think that we need to hold on to the term citizen for the reasons stated below. But I am certainly much more comfortable with resident than I am community member. Because as, as planners, doing planning stuff, it's, it's really the residents that we need to be looking out for. Not anybody just passing through or anything like that. But I, I like resident much better.
I would agree with Eric.
As a suggestion, what staff can do is identify potential areas for such changes. And if there are not too many, we can have that, a little discussion perhaps at the next meeting about what that language looks like and where. And then at that time, you can make a decision on whether to go forward or not.
I think that's a great idea, Brad.
Okay. All right, so if it's all right, I will go forward with that and start our formal presentation. Let me share my screen. So tonight, again, I'm going to very quickly go over the couple slides at the beginning because we covered this. We're gonna talk a little bit about the joint work session, what we're gonna be intending to accomplish. We'll touch briefly again on the purpose of the joint plan. This particular work session will be focusing on public facilities and service element, goals and policies. At our last meeting, we talked about the land use element. We'll get into depth on the joint plan implementation structure. And then we'll talk about next steps and look to schedule a public hearing for May. If any of the planning commissioners have questions while I'm speaking, please feel free to interrupt. I will try to look at, at everybody and do the presentation. But I will look to the chairs to help identify people who may have questions. All right, so again, the joint plan is an element of both the city and the county comprehensive plans. And it is truly a hybrid document. You are correct, it is a plan that is ultimately first adopted by the county. Then it is adopted by the city. So it's a document where as much as possible, we try to strive for agreement on terms and, and concepts and all these other things as part of this process. I mentioned before that this is last substantially updated twenty-five years ago. The city has completed our last growth management update in two thousand and sixteen, which is the, the trigger for us to want to update this plan. We want to use this update process to reflect changes in the current condition of the urban growth area. As well as all of the amendments that have been made to the cities and counties comprehensive plans since the plan was set last substantially updated. Again, the purpose of the joint plan is it's a framework for future development in the urban growth area. As we transition this area from rural to urban level development. As you may be aware, there are substantial rural components still within the UGA. But there are also some very urban areas that are now really coming to form. We, we know of a number of applications that have been submitted for subdivisions and so forth. So that transition is already started. The joint plan serves as the basis for our future planning decisions by each of those, the jurisdictions in our urban growth area. And then in turn, the joint plan gives us the policy framework for the development regulations in the joint plan area. Our intent and hope is that after we finish this joint plan update process, we will turn our attention to looking at Thurston County Code Title Twenty-two, Tom Water Urban Growth Area zoning, and making updates to that to bring that more current with the, both the county and the city codes. Again, very quickly, the urban growth area that we're in, the joint plan area, which is the same term. We're talking about, are all the areas in Tampa, along Black Lake, Little Rock Road, and then just north of Ninety-third. Is, went from about eighty-two hundred acres down to twenty-eight hundred acres in the, in the past twenty-five years. And so the purpose of the plan again is to serve as a transition document for development within this area. In terms of the important elements of the plan, we've talked about the little, since we talked about the land use element. Which is probably the most important element because it lays out the basis for the zoning and development regulations that, that would be appropriate within the area. Other elements of the city's comprehensive plan are adopted by the joint plan and are currently adopted by the joint plan. So it's just a matter of saying that this plan now adopts this element without any changes. The other largest element in here is the public facilities and services element. And this makes sense because while the land use element lays out the types of development we want to see happen. And where and intensities and all those kinds of things. The need and ability to serve that development at the same time development is occurring is a very important part. So this, this element covers goals and policies that establish how future growth in the joint area will be served. So we're talking about transportation, we're talking about utilities and so forth. Primarily, we're talking about water and sewer service, really. Again, at, similar to all of the other elements, it's intended really to ensure coordination between not only the city and county comprehensive plans. But also some regional plans as well as the countywide planning policies. In addition, those goals and policies are further discussed and, and as part of the implementation element in chapter eleven. So the action plan for what needs to happen in order to ensure those policies are implemented comes in chapter eleven. So I'll cover some of the goals. It's a, it's a fairly short list. Again, the importance of providing public involvement in all phases of public facilities and service planning. Preparing public service plans and constructing facilities to, to support planned growth. Again, the linkage to the, the land use element and the transportation element. Follow procedures to mitigate adverse impacts on the environment and other public facilities and service when designing and locating public facilities and services. So that's be mindful of critical areas, protected species, and also where, what other services are provided and not, basically not creating an issue, I guess, when you're, when you're designing and locating such things. Provide public facilities and services consistent with the adopted growth management comprehensive plans, public facility and service plans, interlocal agreements, and other adopted policies. This really is also calling out that, that if we are going to allow for urban growth within our urban growth area as called out by the joint plan, we need to make sure that we provide urban level public services and facilities consistent with that. And also as much as possible at the same time as that. So we don't have situations where we're allowing a certain level of growth, but not providing the necessary level of water sewer service and so forth. And then finally, consider all factors and impacts to determining appropriate methods for providing needed public facilities and services. This is also a catchall goal that I think captures not only what Goal Three was getting at, which is make sure that the, you don't do things that upset the critical areas or, or protected species. But also making sure that you look at a broader vision than just, I'm providing those who are lying down this road. What are the other impacts and unintended consequences really of, of that? So before I go on from this, did any of the commissions have questions on this particular element or any of the things that are discussed here?
Okay, I suppose I had one question on the plans to provide sewer, sewer to the, or UGAs. I mean, to what extent is that really, is, is that a lot issue? Is that a county issue? Is that a city issue?
It's, it's an everybody issue.
Everybody issue.
I think when, and I'm gonna hark back to the, our discussion at the last meeting. When I was presenting some information from the Thurston Regional Planning Council, from their buildable lands report. Where they identified potential issues with the, the residential capacity, being able to actually meet the, you know, the needs of the future. And they had called out in particular, well, providing necessary sewer service to all areas of the urban growth area. And by, when I speak of urban growth areas, I mean not only Tom Waters, but Lacy's and Olympia's and potentially Yelm and so forth. And in their buildable lands report, they did identify very specific areas within that larger UGA that's in the county. That providing sewer service is really a hurdle. And by hurdle, I mean more than just a cost issue. It becomes a, is it, is it really worth it? Cost issue. Above and beyond just the, the, the need to build and install infrastructure to serve these areas. Within just the Tom Water UGA joint plan area, however, they didn't identify any areas of concern. Like they did for some of the areas of Lacy and Olympia, where there's, there's much, it's much harder in some areas to do that. So the expectation is as growth occurs, as development occurs within the UGA and the joint plan area for Tom Water. That sewer service can be provided. And it can be done in a reasonable fashion without extraordinary expense. It is something that Lot is planning for. It is something that currently, I don't believe there are any areas that currently served by sewer within the current UGA. However, I do know that there are at least a couple of subdivision applications moving forward through the county review process where they will be extending water and sewer service to serve their sites. So the, the expectation is yes, that development ultimately will be served by urban level services. And if they're not able to, or for cost reasons or whatever, the county health department has, has the ability basically to limit minimum lot sizes to make sure that septic service can be provided at the end.
Thank you.
Brad, I have a question. Within the UGA, are there any private suppliers of utilities? For instance, the neighborhood water district or anything like that?
You know, I'm not aware of that, but I, I'm not, I'm gonna say there probably is. I can't remember the extent of our water service area. I do know that we had acquired a couple of services in, in south of the city. But I think you're probably right, there probably is a small local. I just don't remember exactly who it is.
So what would be the process in acquiring or assimilating those, those suppliers?
Exactly. That would be something that the city would probably be looking at if those, if those such entities exist. We had a similar, a situation around the Ninety-third interchange that also went outside of the city. Where we acquired a small water utility that was providing service on the east side, to now the west side of Ninety-third. And over time, we, we basically, or we, we basically purchased them, let them continue to operate with their wells and everything. Until such time as we were able to get cross ties made and installed. And then we evaluated their existing water infrastructure, wells and whatever, to see if they would, you know, still appropriate to continue. I think in that case, we actually, we shut those down, but we did have the inner ties made to work with our system. So it's, it's a gradual process and it's a discussion process as we go forward. Okay, if there are no other questions, I'll move on. The next section deals with, if this discussion tonight deals with implementation. And for our purposes, when we were putting together the plan, we were, first of all, obviously focused on what things that we needed to update in the plan in terms of the background information, in terms of population and expected growth and housing and all of those things. As well as taking a look at the policies and making sure that they're brought up to date with the current things that we're also working on, both in the county and the city. We also had an implementation element within the plan. And in my thinking, whenever I'm doing a policy document, I like to have a fairly robust implementation element. Because we can do some wonderful things with policies, but if we never actually go back and have regular check-ins to see if we're actually accomplishing what we're doing with our policies. I don't think they're, they're used and is put to, you know, they're not as a forefront as they should. So really, the purpose of the implementation tables is to really outline the set of actions that the cities and county staff can work together. We're not intending to work on all of these at the same time. There's just too many things. But I think it gives us sort of the, the checklist of things that we need to be paying attention to. Some of our, our things that we will be taking care of anyway, you know, our regular updates to the plan and those kinds of things are called out as specific actions. But I think it's a good reminder, it's sort of a scope of things we want to do once we put the plan into place. So the tables include recommendations for implementing the, the joint plan, including things like ongoing implementation actions. Ensuring the regular conversations between city and county staffs. the regular conversations between city and county staffs, city and county electives and also with everyone who lives in the joint plan area to make sure that everybody understands what is happening and why it's happening. We also talked about zoning code amendments and the coordination between the city and county and other service providers to ensuring smooth transitions of service provisions as the plan area develops. And I think this gets at the question about the water service. So it's again, it's a gradual process. It's an identification of who provides the best service and at what point and what things may need to be upgraded or duplicated to make sure that service is, you know, you have a robust service being provided to all your residents. And then finally, other ways to accomplish the goals of the joint plan. We have things in here. I'll get into the discussion of what that means in more detail. So each of the tables within chapter 11 has a has the following elements, a description of the implementation actions, a joint plan policy basis for those actions. That means it cites that particular policy or goal or action within the joint plan that says this is what we want to do. And then it talks about responsible jurisdictions, either the city or the county or the city and the county for implementing those actions. In some cases, they're city only actions, in some cases they're county only actions, but in most of the cases, they're things that we need to work on together. And then a very brief description of what the status is in terms of are these actions something we need to always, you know, do on a name, excuse me, on an annual basis or a more regular basis that is ongoing? Or are they sort of one off actions that we can check off and say, we've done this, it's completed, we can take it off the list?
Brad, before you move on, just I don't know if this would be if it would occur, but on the responsible jurisdiction, are any of the actions in implementation reliant on somebody besides the county or the city of Tumwater, for example, the port, the state? Yeah, some special districts, you know, something like that.
No, we 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 made sure if we are going to involve another entity, either another jurisdiction or another service provider, we want to make sure that they would be on board with that. So we didn't, we didn't identify anything that is reliant on somebody else who wasn't involved in this process. Okay. Also, a very important point in that when you look at the tables, we have numbers to help us identify the particular implementation actions. However, those numbers do not indicate a priority. Now, if the commissions think there are things that need to be prioritized and put above the others, we can definitely do that. But for the the time being, what is being proposed in the joint plan is just for the ease of reference. It has no bearing on action number one being far more important than action number three or that kind of thing. Again, numbering by priority is a discussion item for the planning commissions as well as adding a schedule column for those actions, which in staff's mind can be fairly general in nature. We use things like by 2023 or within X number of years of plan adoption, for example. What we're looking for is not a hard and fast, if you don't get it done by 2023, the plan is invalid. It's a matter of gauging, okay, here's how we think we will have be able to address these issues. If we need to, we can extend them, but it's a general guidance tool. Whoops. So the implementations cover the following things, comprehensive planning implementation. That's the general, we're going to take a look at this plan when we update our GMA required general comprehensive plans. We want to make sure that those are kept in current and reflect our current plans. That's essentially the the action items under that. Number two deals with urban growth boundaries and annexation implementation, two different things. One is looking at to make sure that the urban growth area for Tumwater is right sized, meaning that it has sufficient capacity, not too much, not too little for the expected 20 year growth. As we noted in the last presentation, staff believes that we do not need to make any changes to the urban growth boundaries. We have sufficient area and we and we don't need to reduce it either. For annexations, this is another discussion of what is the best process for ensuring, number one, the residents of the urban growth area have a voice in the annexation processes, that the county and the city both have voices in the annexation process, and what is the best way to do that? I give an example right now, the as state law has a new element that came in a couple of years ago, which allows for a interlocal agreement to be drafted between a county and a city to address things like island annexations. That is areas that are county right now, unincorporated county, that are entirely surrounded by municipal or city jurisdiction. The intent there is to allow for an appropriate transition from county to city. And similar things I think would be appropriate. This is sort of a as we're moving forward, as we look forward potentially to future annexations, what do we need to do to make sure that it's done in a way that everyone understands what's happening and has a voice in the process? Number three deals with comprehensive plan lands use designation implementations. That really is talking about and it's a pretty short implementation section, but it talks about translating those land use designations into zone districts and into the appropriate mechanisms in regulation to have that happen. Public involvement implementation actions. Anytime we do an update to the plan or an amendment to the plan, that's an opportunity and a need for us to make sure that we're involving the public. And it's also really a good reminder of why we're doing this in the first place. Capital facilities implementation actions touches on that public facilities element that I discussed earlier. What things that we need to do to coordinate not only water and sewer, but transportation and all of that as as this occurs. Zoning and development regulation implementation is sort of the broad term category. It covers things that are very explicit to title 22 in the Thurston Code. It also covers things like how do we coordinate as best we can, things like development guidelines for engineering details and for road sections and things like that. So everything that occurs when a property changes or develops, it falls under that umbrella. And then finally, seven is recommended changes to the Thurston County Code for consistency with our code, specifically title 22 for the Thurston Code. We basically give a list of everything that we'd like to have included as consideration when we when we go forward with the title 22. I'll take each of these in a little bit of detail so you have a little more understanding of what goes into these implementation actions. And again, if you have any questions, please interrupt me. Under the comprehensive plan, in planning implementation, there are 10 actions that are listed. The focus is on implementing the goals and policies of the joint plan as well as continuing the ongoing joint plan review and amendment process. Specifically, and this is this is one I want to call out for a little discussion is action 10, which is to continue to review and as appropriate revise the memorandum of understanding between the city of Tumwater and Thurston County that addresses joint plan area zoning and development standards. So it remains current within the joint plan area. The memorandum of agreement that I'm referring to is from 1995 and it was part of the original joint plan amendment process. Actually, the original joint plan process. And the document is important because it explicitly says, here are the things that title 22 for the Thurston County Code will address. Specifically, uses, densities, intensities, all of those kinds of things. And then there was also a list of things that are excluded from that that discussion for development and that in those cases, county codes would have precedent and there wouldn't be any involvement with the city as part of that. So things like stormwater, critical areas, those kinds of things would remain what the county code is with no input from the city. From the city's perspective, it has been 26 years, it's probably is appropriate to talk a little bit and maybe reopen that discussion. But again, that is an action item for future action identified within this plan that we'd like to consider. Urban growth boundaries and annexations, again, only four actions are listed under this. I think I've talked a little bit about urban growth areas and annexations. And then the question that comes out sometimes as part of the annexation process is currently as part of, I believe, another memorandum of agreement is that as a area is annexed into the city, that areas land use designation and zoning that it had under the county would remain for at least one year before the city would be able to make a change if desired. So our purpose, first of all, with the joint plan is making sure that we all are in agreement with the land use designations and zone districts within the joint plan area. So we shouldn't have that issue. However, there are cases where a particular landowner may want to annex into the city and then ultimately change the zoning for their own purposes and the city may agree with them on that. It's a discussion item because we have a case where I'm we're looking at a property that is currently within the city. Actually, it's a property that is shared by the county and the city parcels are in different jurisdictions. And there's a particular use on that that we would like to see continued. But we, you know, we need to wait for a one year after annexation for something to occur. Again, that's an action item to be taken up after this plan is adopted.
Brad, when you're talking about doing this one year delay on on changes, would that also go for things like shoreline master programs or critical areas? So if you guys end up annexing that eastern shore of Black Lake or down there on the Deschutes, are they going to have a one year delay to to do whatever they need to do before hitting city codes instead of county codes?
I will have to do a little research to into the memorandum to confirm whether or not it was just land use designation and zoning or it also included, as you say, the S and P designations and also critical areas. I don't recall that it did, but I need to confirm that. For comprehensive plan land use designation actions, there are four actions identified. Again, revising county land use designations and zone districts to be more compatible with future land use designations. We are doing that right now, actually, as part of the amendment process for this joint plan. If you recall, the business park zone and the commercial development zone are two things that we're asking to be changed to zones that are compatible with the city of Tumwater zoning. Other things that could be done in the future would be looking at how we apply that utilities land use designation in particular areas. If you call, that's for the Bonneville Power Line, potentially replacing the county's shoreline environment land use designation with the parks and open space designation that we use. And then finally, further updating and refining the neighborhood commercial land use designations. I think for our purposes, from what we're proposing for the joint plan, it's sufficient. This is again, actions that could occur after the joint plan is is updated. Public involvement, again, addressing community involvement in the update process and making sure that neighborhoods are involved in the planning efforts and how we do that. Capital facilities actions, there are 10 actions identified in the implementation section. Actions include things like making capital budget decisions in performance with the joint plan. That means things that we are doing for our six year capital facility plans support what the joint plan says it wants to do. It's also ensuring that our capital facilities can be implemented through a joint planned projected land use density and directions as called out by the joint plant, joint plan lands for public purpose element. I think even more importantly, participating in annual joint plan facility planning process with city and county staff is really essential here. I think there are issues that that are unique to the UGA and are things that one, we can't necessarily do everything that the city would like to do because it's more appropriate perhaps that we do things that the county has. But we need to work through those issues and have a process that we can do that on an annual basis. And then finally, addressing utility provision to the joint plan area. This is also water sewer as well as other private utilities that we may have to consider. Zoning and development regulation actions, there are 15 actions listed there. Again, this is general guidance for updating development regulations to be consistent. Actions include continuing to review and as appropriate revise zone districts and land use designations to allow for a greater mix of uses and densities to support an efficient provision of services. Our our view is this plan is good for this time at this moment. Things change and we are constantly asked when we present something to our council, what has COVID done and what will it do and what should we be paying attention to? So we recognize that what we may be proposing now may need be adjusted in the future. And that's really sort of allowing for that to happen. There are also some specific things we'd like to talk further with county staff about, and that's the countywide transfer of the wealth and rights program. It's a program that has been in existence for over 25 years. It is a an important component of within the city of allowing us to go above our maximum densities in most of our residential zones. If we, if there is land in the county that is basically purchased or the the rights for further development are purchased from that and transferred to the city, we can use that density. However, I'm not aware of any instance where we've actually done that in the recent past. And I think the TDR program, a transfer of all rights program is is an important way of meeting the county goals on one hand of preserving certain areas in the county, agricultural uses, forestry uses and so forth from development pressures, while at the same time focusing that development within the city and even more. So I would encourage that consideration of a further discussion of that. While we don't necessarily need to have the city critical area regulations adopted within the joint plan area, we do want to have conversations with staff to to really make sure that our critical area regulations work well together, that there's not a huge jump when we go from one to the other. In some cases, right now, the county code is stricter than our code and vice versa. It really depends on what kind of things you can look at. Finally, that the county airport hazard overlay is something I know we'll be discussing as part of this joint plan. But that is another thing that we wanted to see occur. And then finally, the section that deals with implementation of changes that have been made to our municipal code and reflect that within the Thurston County Code title 22. We've identified 74 potential actions to undertake. It is a laundry list. It is also a list of things that have occurred over the past 25 years. But I think, and it's not so much that we need to say adopt everything in this ordinance, everything in this ordinance and so forth. It is just when we're going through the process and discussions with county staff and then ultimately the county commissions, planning commissions first and then border commission that we we look at holistically at what title 22 does and what holistically changes should be made to make it closer to what the the Tumwater code is. And it's a discussion process and there are important things that we need to be talking about that are important for everyone. Are there any questions on those implementation tables that I prescribed? Okay. So again, the approval process, we are looking at having the commission schedule and hold a joint public hearing for May 20th and issue a joint recommendation. After that, after that recommendation is made, we have our city council scheduled for June and July to review that joint recommendation and recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval. And then it will be up to the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the joint plan update as part of the larger comprehensive plan update process. And then again, after this process is finished, then we can turn our attention to updates of the development code. Again, I think we identified dates and times and any further questions you can ask either Leah and myself. And then Leah, did you have anything that you wanted to? And then Leah, did you have anything that you wanted to talk about in terms of the airport hazard overlay or anything further in regard to scheduling the joint plan hearing?
I wanted to remind the commissioners that the Airport Hazard Overlay Code Amendment is included in the packet and give anyone an opportunity to ask questions about that. Have you had a chance to look at it? No questions then? And I'm in support of scheduling a public hearing for May 20th. Was that May 20th? Is that right?
So, is, for me, for clarification, is this a joint question, or does the Thurston County Commissioners approve and then Tumwater approves?
Because this will be a recommendation, I believe the suggestion is that both the county and the city commissions will meet and make a decision. I provided in the four-year packet an example of the resolution for the city side that I think the, the, the city planning commission will consider. If it sounds appropriate that we have a joint hearing and discussion of this, and then ultimately the votes would be the city commission votes on the city resolution and a similar action will be taken by the county commissioners. That would be my suggestion for a way to go forward.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure, I'm trying to process it in my brain.
So we have on the agenda, item number four is to set a public hearing for May 20th, 2021, and that would be a joint public hearing with the city of Tumwater and the Thurston County Planning Commissions. That is the next step. At that public hearing, we will have an item for recommendation, and we will seek a recommendation from both planning commissions at that meeting. Of course, there's time for follow-up after the public hearing, so if the planning commissions hear a public comment and they wish to make changes, we'll, we'll have a work session scheduled for after that public hearing as well. So there's time to debrief.
And the intent from the city side is to take both, and if, if, if the recommendation is the same from both the county and the city commissions, we will take that forward. Or if there are differences, we will take both of those forward to our city council for their consideration.
Hi, Don. You're muted, Don.
Back up a moment to that airport overlay question. I noticed one of the things that says pre-existing uses, if, if something that was in the airport overlay area was destroyed by fire or some natural disaster, you're saying that it could not be replaced if it doesn't beat the current zone?
It can be replaced under the airport hazard overlay, but it cannot be replaced if it doesn't fit in the underlying zone. That's what it states.
So it, it'll be grandfathered or permitted as an existing use if it's already there? But if something happens to it, it cannot be replaced?
It depends on what the underlying zone is. It can, it can be replaced as far as the overlay goes, the overlay zone. It doesn't, it doesn't prohibit replacement. If the underlying zone prohibits replacement, which, so if that's residential and it was maybe a commercial use and it was no longer permitted in that underlying zone, it would not be permitted to be replaced. Did I get that right, Brad? That you're understanding?
I believe so, but I also think the county and the city codes differ on this point, so I'm I'm not going to answer the question on zone.
Right. That's what, that's what the Airport Hazard Overlay Zone Amendment says.
The reason I ask is because it seems to me in the county code, if, if there is something and it's destroyed, as long as it's not substantially changed, it can be replaced, even though it was non-conforming to begin with. I don't know if that's fact, but I think it is.
I think there are time limits on when it can be replaced. If, I think there's a three-year time limit. If it's not replaced by then and it's non-conforming, then it cannot be replaced after that three-year time period.
Does that apply to the airport overlay area as well?
No, it is very specific in stating that that it can be rebuilt. Oh, you mean that three-year time period? Is that what you mean?
Yes, ma'am.
It does not state that. It does not have a three-year time limit. It can be replaced. There, there, that's a good question. Probably I need to look into that and see if that needs clarification.
Hello, this is Raoul from District One. Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
I'm Raoul, we're here.
All right. Hey, thanks. Yeah, that is actually a very good question that the planning commissioner brought up. I mean, not only would a particular business suffer a catastrophic loss, but then if they cannot rebuild it back to what they were doing before, that would be quite unfair and harsh. Wouldn't you agree? I can understand the county's three-year moratorium so that they can rebuild that again, which seems reasonable. If you're sleeping at the wheel and then you don't, you don't jump on it, then that's your own problem. However, just experiencing a catastrophic loss and then on top of that, you add insult to injury, that doesn't make sense in the American way of life.
I think we, I think we experienced that with Johnson's Meats, but I, I don't think that this particular document is where we need to address that. The airport overlay stuff really isn't where we would protect a situation like Johnson's Meats.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I thought that's what Leah really said. I mean, that whatever the city or county rule is on a fire destruction, a building goes with that zoning code, whether it's in the airport overlay zone, has nothing to do with it.
That's correct. The airport overlay zone allows.
Sort of beyond the scope of what we're doing here. It's, what's the county policy in general?
Any more questions or thoughts?
Will we get a copy of the full document with changes noted in it?
That should have been included in your packet already.
On the March 31st packet, we sent out the draft joint plan. And prior to the public hearing, we will send out another version of the joint plan that might have a couple of small changes in it. That'll be the public hearing draft, as well as all of the other documents will be reset for that public hearing, so.
Well, are you speaking about the draft of the joint plan or the draft of the airport hazard overlay?
Whole thing.
That was included in the March 31st, and you will get another copy, yes.
Yeah. And in our staff report, I will attempt to identify those areas that have changed since the March 31st draft, so you can have an easy reference, so you don't have to go through the entire plan document to do that. Thank you.
That would be very, very good. This is Raoul again, and also from the time you notified the impacted individuals in the community. What's the timeframe from the time they received their correspondence with all these documents to the public hearing?
We're deciding that today, Raoul, as far as the public hearing.
I do want to add that a letter went out to all the landowners that would be affected by any zoning amendments last Friday. I have received one phone call with a, from a person who has questions about sewer hookup, actually. So I, the first letter has gone out to the property owners. There will be more that go out prior to the public hearing.
What about?
Good, that's very proactive.
That live within 300 feet or whatever that distance is of those properties?
Yes, in the UGA, it's 300 feet. In the rural county, which will be affected by the airport hazard overlay, that, that distance is 500 feet within any parcel that would be affected.
Okay. Would somebody willing to move to send a public hearing on the Thurston County Tumwater Joint Plan Update for Thursday, May 20th, 2021, at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard?
Sure, Commissioner Robbins, I will so move that we schedule that hearing for the 20th.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any conversation or comments?
Um, I, I'm going to support the motion, but I believe that it would be in our best interest to have a separate decision-making time from the Tumwater Planning Commission, because I think we might have some different ideas. And if staff's trying to coordinate between two different planning commissions talking, I think it might be a little more difficult.
Thanks. Anything else? So all those in favor of the motion to move the public's, public hearing to May 20th? Signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Well, thanks, guys. We'll move forward on that. And I'm sure we'll have some more discussions in the interim. So if there's anything else that anybody has a question or needs to speak up about, this is your chance here.
I had one thing. I think we had talked about the have the city having to wait for a year. And Eric brought up a couple of the changes here. But I just want to, I want to get some clarification. I think those, those are zoning changes and non-annexations. So wouldn't they go into effect immediately?
The couple clarifying question, statement, I guess, what is being proposed as amendments as part of the joint plan update would take place immediately after adoption of the joint plan. So if we're proposing an amendment, that would be occurring after the board of commissioners give their final approval to the packet. The question about an annexation occurring and then a subsequent proposal to change the zoning by the city after it becomes part of the city, that would be an item for further discussion identified as an implementation action as part of the joint plan. So how we do deal with that and what the potential outcomes of that would be dealt with later after the adoption of the plan. The plan basically says this is something we want to look at. Staff, go ahead and look at it. Not saying it, this is what it's going to change to, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Leah. So reminder to the Thurston County Commissioners that we do have a regular meeting next Wednesday. Hope to see you all there, and we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Awesome. Good night.
Thank you.
Awesome, night.